Special meaning of the Danbury Board of Education, all those in attendance could rise for the clapping. I applaud education's special right of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now it's a public participation. The Board welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. The Board will not permit any expression of personal complaint or defamatory comments about Board of Education personnel and students nor against any person connected with the Danbury Public School System. Given the crowd here this evening, we'll try and keep to the three minutes, so please keep your comments as succinct as possible to allow everyone to speak. That being said, is there anyone in the first row that wishes to address the Board this evening? If you haven't yet signed in your name, please do so.
Yeah.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me? If you can hear me, it's fine. Thank you. Okay. So I wanted to address the Board about the principal search. I have two children at Danbury High School, one of whom just graduated fifth year, and my second child will be a sophomore this fall. I'm very concerned about the resignation of Frau Rossi and the search for a new principal. I feel very strongly that the search process should actively include current parents who are the most at stake. I include myself in that group and would very much appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this process. I also think that transparency in the process is of the utmost importance. I'm sure that the Board of Education wants to instill the highest confidence in its judgment and ability to choose strong and stable leadership for Danbury High School. It's not an easy task to make these decisions, I know that, especially for the largest high school in the state. In his four years at the high school, my son saw three principals pass through its doors. This lack of longevity was a matter of concern and quite frankly embarrassment to the whole community. And the selection process needs to be reexamined carefully so that we're able to hire and to feed a principal who's committed to the interests of the students of Danbury High School. So more specifically, I'm calling for parents to be involved and I'm calling for them to have input in the following aspects and stages of the search process. The determination of selection criteria for the new principal. A review and approval of a preliminary list of candidates with access to all their credentials and qualifications. A review and approval of a final list of candidates. I also think parents should be allowed to interview them. So I hope that the superintendent of the Board of Education will accept the help and the input of motivated parents, parents who've put a lot of thought into this matter and who have concerns that should be heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Sager. Joining you, Ms. Sager. Mr. Richard Holmes.
My name is Richard Holmes and I live at 8 Bear Mountain Road here in Danbury. Additionally, I am a teacher at Danbury High School and have been at the Danbury School System since 1993. I love Danbury and I'm invested in Danbury. My son graduated at Danbury High School. What we need in the search for a new principal is someone who's also invested in Danbury, somebody who truly cares what happens in this community. We don't need to search another part of the state or another part of the country. There are very qualified people in and around the Danbury School System, whether they're in the school system directly or in the surrounding area, but people who are clearly love Danbury, as do I, and would do a very, very fine job because of that caring for Danbury community. We have another issue here as well. Danbury High School is unfortunately divided and dysfunctional. It is not a great place at this point, and we also need someone in here that is going to heal rather than divide. So part of the criterion, I think, should be someone who has that ability, that ability to bring us together. And if we do that, then I really don't care who you end up hiring, just as long as they care about Danbury and are going to bring us together.
Thank you, Mrs. Sager. Senator Turner.
Hello, my name is Sandra Turner and I am representing Freshman Sports here tonight. I just wanted to give the Board an update and let you know that since we were last here together, we have gotten ourselves an employee identification number and we have 501 tax exempt status and we are now operating a booster club. The official name of our booster club is Hatters Athletic Booster Club, and therefore we would like to officially request that our relationship that we've somehow gotten into with the adoptive school be severed. There seems to have been some misunderstandings along the way that have caused some hard feelings in the collection of money and money that has gone to adopt a school that we don't know what belongs to the freshman sports and what doesn't because no one has requested it to be earmarked as freshman sports. So since we now have our own EIN number and we are officially a 501 recognized booster club, we would like to just go on about our business as the booster club collecting money. That's number one. Number two, I understand that it is very difficult, but we're still going to keep coming to the same thing every month and every time we come here, and that's going to be freshman sports needs to be reinstated into the budget somehow. I understand funds are tight, I understand a lot of things need to be done, but I also noticed that there are 23 job openings in the school system right now. So you make cuts, but yet we have room for 23 additions. I don't know how many people left, but there are 23 jobs that need to be filled. Somewhere in that budget, this Board needs to find the money to reinstate freshman sports, especially since one of your own teachers just sat here and said, "Danbury High School is divided and dysfunctional." That is frightening. Frightening words coming from an educator in our only high school, where all of our children are going to be going. If Danbury High School is divided and dysfunctional, the one thing that many, many children find is an outlet is sports. We need to keep sports available for these children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sager. Cindy Gardner.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I also obviously am here on the freshman sports issue. We've had, you know, an extremely dedicated group of parents out there hustling every single day since this broke, working every minute that we possibly can to, you know, raise the funds for this. I think we've been doing a fantastic job in such a short amount of time. We're at about the $25,000 mark right now. And so I am asking again for, you know, some cooperation, you know, and maybe some partnership here or something. This is too big of a program to let go by the wayside. We have 400 people show up for the pasta dinner, and this is becoming bigger and bigger and bigger as more people find out about this. You know that you did it right at the dirty end and there wasn't a lot of publicity about it, but we are making noise about it and it's going to continue to grow and it's going to continue to become a huge issue. Now, you've got the principal that left. People are not interested in coming to this area with such problems in the high school. We have a realtor working with us who estimates at least 30 percent now, they're saying, of people are right out of the gate, turned off by the Danbury area because of what's going on in Danbury High School, the fact that there is now no freshman sports and there's such, you know, instability going on. This is something that we need to work together and fix this. This is fixable. You know, $70,000 can be found somewhere. We're certainly working to give you a whole big chunk of it as well. So we need to work together and we need to fix this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gardner. Billy Anderson.
Hello, everybody. My name is Billy Anderson. We started this a while ago. I'm glad that we started this about the freshman program. I met some wonderful parents, as you see here. If this had never occurred, I would have never had the opportunity to meet these wonderful mothers and fathers that care about the kids. You know, the freshman program is an important part of school. We're out there, we're working hard, you know, we've been fundraising, and as you heard Cindy say, we have raised about $25,000. And in the beginning, we said to you ladies and gentlemen that we will raise to $75,000 plus thousand dollars, because it's an important issue for the kids to keep them focused in academics. And as you know, this has been a part of Danbury community for quite a long time. You know, we have a ways to go, but there's no doubt in my mind that I know we shall achieve those goals. But just to give you a little story here, as I was saying, you know, I remember when I was a little boy, I was a very shy person, and if I didn't participate in sports, I wouldn't have got the opportunity to meet a lot of good friends that I met on the road. Likewise, as I said about these wonderful parents here. And I was a little taken back about the last meeting. There was a comment made that we was not able to respond. Just to let you know is that we try to do everything professionally. You know, I strive to respect people, and yet when people don't respect me, I will speak to those individual, on an individual level. We're not here trying to embarrass the Board, we're not here trying to embarrass Dr. South or anybody. We're trying to do the right thing for these kids. And one thing, we're not cool as parents. We love our kids, we love kids, and we are going to raise that money for the kids. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the Board this evening? Please be sure that you sign in.
Hello, Board. Hi, Sherry Rossi from 151 Shelter Rock Road. Actually, here concerned about the space issue in regards to Shelter Rock. My daughter is going to be entering the third grade. One of the second largest issues is the third grade. Right now, the ratio, three classrooms, 28 to 29 children per teacher. This concerns me. Last year, she was in second grade and there was an issue with, again, the assistance in the classroom and being able to teach the students thoroughly. Right now, I have, I came over from Haytown where I was a lower number. She was a high performer there, she was a high performer at Shelter Rock, and I want to keep her at Shelter Rock and I don't want to be switching schools, but I am concerned about the ratio per teacher. I think this does need to be addressed as right now, the music is ready in the cafeteria, the art is now going to be mobile art, going through the classrooms, and now we're using another fourth classroom space. The teachers have brought also to their contention of being able to teach the children thoroughly so that they're getting the education that they need. So I think that the Board just needs to consider what we're going to do if we're going to bring these in or bring, you know, extra space to the Shelter Rock School so that everybody, no one's going to be falling behind and we can teach at a thorough level. So, and you guys, we just consider the space issue and what we're going to do and plan so that I don't want to have to think about movement for out of the area or other possibilities. And I think a lot of the other Shelter Rock parents feel the same way. It's a high tech school, it's a good school to be in, great staff, just the issue with the crowding and limited space. If you guys are impressed at that.
Thank you, Mrs. Sager. Anyone else wish to address the Board this evening? Anyone else wish to address the Board this evening?
Hi, good evening. Hi, my name is Anita Servusman. I'm from 36 Cresview Lane in, by Shelter Rock. I moved from the city, from Manhattan, about six years ago. One of my understandings, I guess maybe I can do my homework, or maybe the realtor kind of fooled us, saying how the school system was a better school system, and I am saddened to say that I had my daughter at Shelter Rock and I pulled her out at fourth grade. Now she's attending a magnet, she's a straight A student, she's doing wonderful, but I have a five-year-old. And now I am considering her to go back to, I actually, I was accepted for the full-day program at Shelter Rock. And the reason why I reconsidered, because I see how passionate Ms. Horn is, a person that I think she sleeps at school. Every time I call her, she picks up her phone, I'm like, why is not the secretary picking up the phone? So she, I see that she's involved. So I want to give this chance, an opportunity to, I guess, kind of maybe the waterbed redeem themselves. And the reason why I'm so concerned that I might go back on my word again is because of the space issue. And that was one of the, one of many reasons why I pulled my, at the time, my fourth grader. So I want to believe, I think Danbury, yes, we are a melting pot, but I have to say, Danbury's been very good to me. I've always thought that I moved, and I see that there's a lot to offer, and I hope that you guys, as parents, as, just human needs, please, please put your best foot forward. I know the budget is tight, but we need to give our children a chance. I was a single parent for eight years, I've been married now for six years, and I used to walk into schools in Manhattan and used to tell the principal, "I don't know how my daughter's going to attend the school, but she will." She was a private school, and they helped me, and she did. I moved to Queens, moved right next to one of the best magnet schools, went in there, "My daughter's going to attend the school, you have to help me." I got her in. So I'm passionate and I want to believe in Danbury, I want to believe in you guys, so please, please work on the space issue. It's imperative that our children are our future, basically. They will be in your seats one day, and I hope that, thank you for it. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, everyone. Anyone else wish to address the Board this evening? Captain Sager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Appreciate the opportunity to address you. Tonight, I'll keep my comments brief. I think that parents and teachers and the administration of Shelter Rock School can speak volumes for their needs. I can only speak to the meetings and the substance that came from the meetings that I had with them. I can tell you that it is a phenomenal, as you know, great neighborhood school, as we have many great neighborhood schools throughout our city. Someone who has lived in the area for about two decades right across from the school, I can tell you that it is very much a community school. You have parents and teachers walking there, going to events, you have the involvement of the principal, Ms. Horn, and others, far beyond the contractual requirements or the procedures that were required them to do things, they go above and beyond. A cousin of mine, Millie Hirack, was a teacher there for many years before she left and became a bit ill, and I would hear from her the great things that were happening there. While I do not have children of age to go to Shelter Rock School yet, I speak here not just as a councilperson representing my constituents, but as a parent of children who will one day be in the Danbury School System. I know you're dealing with limited funds, and as a council member, I know that I have voted on limiting those funds, and I, you know, stated on the public record. That being said, with that which you have, I sincerely hope that the Board and those involved can ensure that Shelter Rock School does receive the equitable attention that it deserves just as any other school in the system, that the parents and teachers' involvement is looked upon as a positive, not as an obstacle to progress at Shelter Rock School regarding overcrowding. And while you members, just as myself as a council member, can't do everything that everybody wants us to do because of limited funds, very oftentimes, I think we can make better decisions if we listen to those who have the proverbial boots on the ground at the schools. We might have ideas and we might believe that they're correct, but oftentimes, those ideas can be adjusted and performed better in the real world when we take into consideration the comments of the parents, the teachers, the administrators of various schools, not just Shelter Rock, but across the system. One other item I wanted to just touch on was with regard to the resignation of the principal at Danbury High School. I hope that going forward, notwithstanding some of the issues that had arisen prior and during the search thereafter, that the Board and those involved with the search will conduct it in a manner that is, that has open communication and involvement of many of the stakeholders, not necessarily formally, but even informally, so that those who wish to participate and voice concern or suggestion may do so. And while the minimal requirements may not dictate that, I think we've all learned over time that open communications, albeit informal at times, can help to bridge many of the gaps and miscommunications that may occur. With that, I thank you for your time, and I really look to the parents and the teachers and others that are here to speak to the issues involved going forward, not just tonight, but I'm sure several other meetings as we go through the summer and fall to address the pressing issue before you. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Counselor Sager. Any further public participations this evening? Any further public participations this last call? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. The Chair seeks a motion regarding action item B.
The Board of Education approved the items on the consent calendar. As mentioned, it is a 149 through 153.
Second. Second, Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion regarding the consent calendar?
No, just a question. The 4,000 dollars for, to support the extended day enrichment portion of Elsworth Stadium Summer Program, that amount, what is the search for at Summer Program for this season?
I defer just a moment. Would you?
I'm standing probably in the room.
Questions on the donation, which is I have seen.
I wasn't part of that initiative. It didn't come through me directly to Mrs. Blackwell. I do, I'm sorry. That thing did not come through me publicly directly. The contact was probably made directly from the foundation to Mrs. Blackwell. I do know that they have an extensive extended day program on achievement building, which on Fridays and other sessions like that, where you can really be able to help engage all students ahead to increase their background knowledge and general, generic experience. And beyond that.
We can't hear you.
But my question is, with that particular $4,000, that $4,000 is for the, to support that whole, like me, this summer, $2,000 in debt.
I see. I don't know. I can find out very directly from the board at that. This particular, this, this, this.
Anna's in the audience, and I believe she probably can answer it for us, the donations.
The $4,000 covers the enrichment activities for just this summer. It's been casing about 60 children, 60 to 72 children right now that are in that wraparound program around the summer school between Ellsworth and Haytown School. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Mead. Any further discussion regarding the consent calendar? Mr. Janelle.
I have a question to you on the minutes of last week. In the ratification of the transportation cost, we elected to go this year with the credit for the three of us, but it was also discussed, I mean, if I'm correctly, that that cost, that would be a cost that was in the following year, would that be correct? Would it be paid for that trust in the settlement?
Starting 2012, 2013.
Right. So I think, that being said, was discussed, we should be adding to the minutes here, so it's known that there would be a cost for the following. So then it should be adjusted.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Taborson.
We, the consent calendar, I just said, except these, except resignations, I assume that we're going to do it, except that, but I just feel there's a concern of my part that we all just support people with our, on the number of resignations and people moving the last time, and I have concern about that. I see no alternative but to accept the resignation, but that's their choice. We're awesome, but people, and I think there are still reasons, and I feel sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Taborson. I think it will be addressing that further in our discussion. Thank you, Mr. Taborson. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Extension? Motion carries unanimously. The Chair seeks a motion regarding action item A.
The Board of Education ratified the Sony Making Survivors UE Local 2002, CIOU Local 35 contract for the fiscal year 2011-2012. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Taborson, discussion on action item B. Any discussion on action item B? Mr. Taborson.
I haven't taken part of the negotiations, so I just feel that our different unions are pretty realistic in what they're going at on this, with the extension. And I just commend them, they're pretty realistic. It's hard to answer everybody. We just have to deal with how should we help everybody exist.
Thank you, Mr. Taborson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Extension? Motion carries unanimously. The Chair seeks a motion regarding action item B.
The Board of Education ratified the Danbury, our educators, C S E A slash S E I U Local 2001 contract for fiscal year 2011-2012.
Second, Mr. Fazey. Any discussion on action item B? Just one question I ask, just to clarify, both of these contracts are women who are at the same salary range?
That's right. The parent educator one that you're talking about now, actually, the wage re opener, this was the last year of it, so the wage re opener will settle at zero, and then this contract will be.
Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. The chair seeks a motion regarding action item B.
The Board of Education ratified the Sony making subscribers. UE local two two two, CIOU local three five contract for the official year two thousand one, two thousand twelve. This is a one five four.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Taborson, discussion on action item A. Any discussion on action item A? Mr. Taborson.
I haven't taken part of the negotiations. I just feel that our different unions are pretty realistic in what they're planning on this, with space extension. And I just commend them, at least what they're being realistic. It's hard to manage here, but we just have to deal with how should we help it exist. I think they're very important.
Thank you, Mr. Taborson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. The chair seeks a motion regarding action item B.
The Board of Education ratified the Danbury error educators, C S E A slash S E I U local two thousand one contract for the fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
Second, Ms. Fazey. Any discussion on action item B? Just one question I asked, and just to clarify, both of these contracts are women who are at the same salary range?
That's right. The parent educator one that you're talking about now actually had a wage re opener. This was the last year of it, so the wage re opener will settle at zero, and then this contract will be up for renewal in its entirety next year.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on action item B? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. Now I turn to our discussion items for this evening. Discussion item A is Shelter Rock School enrollment update, and I'll turn before Dr. Pascaro.
Thank you very much. Thank the parents for being here as well. I was not at the 2020 meeting, and I understand, just to clarify the purpose, the 2020 meeting was, had been in operation about two years, and it's really been working the last few months because they anticipated enrollment based on some studies that we've done. And they are looking into management in terms of possible facility additions. So the question came of what's going to happen immediately, particularly at Shelter Rock and other schools that we have in enrollment of challenges. And that's what we'll talk about today. I thought it'd be fair to everyone that's saying we have a background in the district here, I'm sorry, we have an issue with challenge throughout the district, not just the shelter rock here, but our enrollment. I've asked Bill to put together a short presentation. I didn't get anything out because we didn't have any folks here, but I think we need to bring some clarity to the challenges we have in the district that we have been signing for about six months, and it produced itself where it's really pushing others of the way we can take. We've made some adjustments, and I think I'd like to go through them, and then we can discuss the short term and the long term ideas that we have. And I tell you, they're just ideas because some of this will depend on, obviously, the economy in 2020. So Bill.
In the back, there's sort of light switches. There's somebody who's in the bar left. Good job.
As Dr. Pascarello said, this is a short presentation. Sorry, my mother would never forgive me if I went on the mend. It's a short presentation, it's about nine, ten slides long. The first half will be very familiar to the board, because we've been working on this, as Dr. Pascarello mentioned, for months now. But we felt that maybe some folks coming in the audience who have not come to previous meetings would want to give you a little bit of background information. We've been talking about a significant increase in enrollment over the course of a number of years now. Danbury is one of the few communities in the state, this region, that's growing. Most others are actually declining, but we're staying stable. So just a quick recap, two thousand eight, we had roughly nine thousand nine hundred eighty-six, roughly ten thousand students. In just a two-year span, we've gone up by four hundred students. The rate of increase has gone beyond what the demographers, who are professionals who study enrollment trends, what they've projected. We have two different teams. When you look at this, one was a state expert, Dr. Peter Crowell, and one was the city commission, the savant team, the savant room. Both very, very well-known, and in both cases, we've exceeded their expectations. For two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, K five should remain approximately fifty-two hundred. However, two hundred fifty-eight or plus five percent students over the enrollment projection has already occurred. This is an example of what I meant when I said that even the professionals were somewhat taken aback by the dramatic increase. So we're roughly talking about two hundred fifty students, just at the elementary level. Keep my remarks just elementary because that's fundamental to the conversations about this evening. Compounding this, the problem that we have in our principals are really at their roots end. The term mobility means a student coming in September and leaving before June. So students start September first, and by June thirtieth, that student, our expectation is that student remains throughout that year, then moves on to the next grade level. We currently are experiencing a thirty-nine percent mobility rate, meaning that at any given time, approximately forty percent of our students are moving within the school district, within Danbury, or leaving Danbury, and another group of kids are coming into backfield. So if you talk to your teachers, to those people, parents, and say, has that classroom been stable throughout the course of the year? Almost to a classroom in Danbury, almost every single classroom has changed substantially over the course of this past year. And in some cases, a class of, say, twenty students, twenty-two students, we could have ten or eleven or twelve students who have changed during the course of the year. So in some cases, a fifty percent mobility rate. That makes it very difficult for a principal or anyone else to really plan effectively because it's constantly moving target. Another very important part, if you look at the bottom of this, these quadrants, where you see K one, that stands for kindergarten through first grade. Our target, and I want to go back to that term in a minute, our target is twenty-two students per classroom. So it's one teacher per twenty-two students. That's a significant shift over just a few years ago. Our numbers used to be, for kindergarten, first, and second grade, twenty students per classroom. We had to change that because we just didn't have the funding, nor did we have the space, even if we had the available funding, to address that significant increase. In grades three through five, historically, our target has been twenty-five students. Now we dropped it down to second grade, so from second grade through fifth grade, our target is twenty-five students. There's nothing in contract that says we have to have that. There's nothing in state law, there's nothing in board policy. It's just what we think as educators is good professional practice. I know I speak for Sal on this, and for the members of the cabinet, Elliot Kim, not enjoying this on here a while ago. If we had classes of fifteen, we would love that. There is research out there that says a small to class ratio, one to whatever, the better it is for students to more individualize attention. It's kind of a no-brainer, which is a counter to what we think of otherwise. Unfortunately, because of this pernicious financial climate, we've been forced to change those targets. This is getting into new information, and just a way of connecting the two for the board. We are continuing, as you might imagine, to follow the recommendations that we reviewed in the board over the past four, five, six months. Secondly, the greatest enrollment challenge as of today at the elementary level is at grade three, and you'll see data sets on that in a moment. So it's not just Shelter Rock. At grade three, across the district, we have concerns that we're monitoring literally on a daily basis. The enrollment numbers are truly volatile and will continue to change daily. The enrollment's tracked in my office. We're doing this right now once a week primarily because schools are closed, many of the principals are away on vacation, school secretaries are away on vacation. Beginning the second week of August, that's when everybody comes back. We will be checking the numbers daily, and as we get closer to the start of the school year, we check the numbers twice a day. However, what we're looking at already is there have been some substantial changes. Let me use Shelter Rock as an example. We had ninety-one students in kindergarten register, and then it dropped to eighty-nine students. Not atypical, sometimes you have a decrease, but nobody is saying, well, this is great, we have fewer students to attend to, because those numbers grew up to ninety-five students a week. Typically, when principals and secretaries come around, special secretaries, because they do the registration, we see an uptick in numbers or a change in the number of students in the school because parents know that the administrators and the secretarial team are not in at that point, so they wait. As I mentioned, the thirty-nine percent mobility rate is a contributing factor. And once again, not to take shots at these people, they're very good at what they do. They've been taken aback by this dramatic increase in Danbury, which is not reflective of the mission at large. The board will remember this graphic very well. For the folks in the audience who have not seen it, if you look at the top left, there is kind of a traditional bullseye dartboard. You'll see a white outer circle, you'll see a black second level circle, and three, see three inner circles. As we've been struggling with challenging budgets, we have not just been making cutbacks, we have now this cutting to the core of our work. We don't have the resources, and we're not faulting anyone, and we recognize clearly what's happening throughout our community, the number of parents and individuals that have lost their homes, the number of folks who are unemployed, it gets old, our grandchildren unemployed, and we really understand that. However, we want to make clear to folks that we aren't getting close to cutting to the core. We've already cut in two rings. There are only three left, and apologize for the fact that the colors are on the line. If you look at the orange, the yellow, and red circles, consecutive circles, starting with the red, as a board, as senior staff, as a district, we came around the idea that, at all costs, maintain reading, writing, and mathematics. If you don't do that, you really don't have a school system. You must maintain the basic skills areas. If you go to the yellow circle, our top priority, very close to mission critical, is maintain anything that's required by law. Now, the state statute is less important, ten sixteen B, but that says you must have a planned, ongoing systematic program of instruction in the legislative areas. And so we must maintain that by state law with all the attendant features of that. And then there are special ed requirements, there are English language learning requirements, so on and so forth. So our two inner circles say, mission critical, you don't have a school system without basic skills. Secondly, you must attend to law or your career function outside of the law. The third circle is not less important or much less important, it's very important, because we've already cut two circles away, and this says, if we have to cut at this point in time, it's anything other than basic skills and those things that are required by law. Not a healthy place to be for any school system, but a place that many school systems across the country are finding themselves in right now, and I know on the state of the obvious. So any cuts that we're making will be made to that orange circle, very important areas, we don't want to anyway suggest that they're not. Mission, they're not mission critical, but they're very close to them. Heretically speaking, we don't have a slide on this, but just because so many folks are here, you may not have seen this. I know many of the folks have, we did the budget hearing at Doron View, but frequently, with different parents, can't you eliminate some of those administrators? We've gone from fifty-two administrators down to thirty-four, and we've cut central office directly in half. And many of us have had our jobs doubled, and we ask for no increase in pay. We do recognize that we have to do what we have to do. That mission critical pays reading, writing, and math, we have stayed in every place possible away from all the leading teachers. And that's why we lost kindergarten aides, and that's why we've lost at the middle school level, technology education, family consumer science, where we lost our gifted program. We're trying to stay away from the most basic core mission. The item is in black, our items that the board has seen before, and these are part of our ongoing budget presentations. The item grid is also a prior item that I want to call out, to take a reference to tonight because it's associated with the conversation. We agreed as a team, being the team here, that with input from many meetings, that as we try to stay true to mission critical and all legal requirements, we would have to reallocate existing staff and resources wherever possible to meet basic operational needs. We have cut back to the point of no longer having full-time people in very critical positions. We do not have a technology director. I'm serving in that role right now, our former technology director, who oversaw a multimillion dollar installation, comes in ten hours a week as a consultant to us. We have cut back on our nursing program, which is also something that should be on time. We've tried to cut every week, except for the multiple mission critical, and we allocate people. Don't mean to sound flip on this one, folks who are really honest, or you're trying to think out of the box. We had somebody come back and say, you're so far out of the box, you can destroy the box. We're really thinking in very creative ways, but it only goes just so far. So we'd like to review with you, and this is all branded for everybody here, board members as well. We have three different items. We apologize because we knew to make copies of this, but weren't sure how many people would come. And this is a work in progress to make a more formal presentation. We want to make sure that this special meeting at least had some preliminary information shared on the board. As the numbers start to solidify, as the principals and secretaries come back, we give you very, very hard numbers very frequently. So this is a photograph of part of what the board has already seen, is to really share with the audience tonight. The board asked us, we were charged with a space utilization update. Mrs. Thompson and I were charged with co-chairing that initiative. We came forward with a large document, a hundred and seventy pages or so. The board reviewed that over many, many, many meetings, and then eventually said, would you please come to us with recommendations from senior staff, given everything you've waded through, all this, what it is that is still down to? So we came back to, what could we do with no money and no ability to go out and build a new school? Even if the community turned around and said, we think the best idea is to build a new elementary school, we're willing to fund it, can we have it up and running by September? Obviously, not under all kinds of state requirements we have to go through. It takes years to build a school. If anybody's familiar with Ellsworth, how long it took us to do that, as we were starting to build it, we found it was, we were going to be building brown soil. It was a former dunk, we had to remove all that, that material, remove material, there was an aquifer there for the Danbury Hospital. That had to be capped and show off, and new plans had to be made. It takes years to build a school. So as we knew that we were going to have an increase in enrollment, but nobody, including the professionals, knew that was going to be this dramatic, and all kinds of competing issues as to why this actually happened, and the professionals are going back and forth on that. Regardless of what the professionals are saying, we're saying as educators, we still have a problem on our hands. What can we do when the board has charges to come before? So undesirable as they may be, here are the items that came forward, and I don't believe everybody can read it, so let me kind of paraphrase for you. The top line says, at the elementary level, the arts are not a cart. If you're not familiar with the term, it means closing an art room, for example, and getting a portable unit that can move between from classroom to classroom to classroom. Can good artwork be done on that? Absolutely, we have some wonderful artwork being done in different schools. Is it the same as an art? Absolutely not. What do you want? You clearly want a full-size, fully functioning, fully equipped art, same thing goes for music. But going back to Mr. Rappi, this has been the mantra for us, mission critical at all costs, maintain the most basic programs. Would I want my child, or in my case, my children, traveling, having their teachers travel in, their academic teachers, or I'd rather have them stay in the classroom with an academic teacher, or the art teacher comes in, or the music teacher comes in, they go to them. I would prefer the latter if I had to. Not desirable, but that's what I would do. So pros on this, it's a short-term solution, it can be implemented immediately, there's relatively low cost. The cons, we lose a dedicated space for the arts, and it's very difficult, once you lose it, to get it back. The only way we'd get it back is if enrollment declined, or we had additional. Second item, the second row, alternate use of space, meaning can we multipurpose certain areas? Using Shelter Rock as the example of that, we have what's called a cafeteria. If you're not familiar with that, it's a cafeteria that has a stage built on it, it's been a low design. When I went to school, it was a gym and cafeteria. In the gym, we also paid, and we had a stage, and other things as far as I can recall. So the idea of putting the music teacher on the stage, why would you put music on the stage if, apologize, an engineer's a music teacher? My wife is a musician, as opposed to the art teacher, because the music teacher has less paraphernalia, and the kids don't work on these little art projects that typically would go on art tables. So typically, the music teacher is the first one to lose his art room, followed by the art teacher. And at Shelter Rock, and alternate use of spaces, on the stage, in the cafeteria, is where the music lessons, where the music instruction is provided. A third item, it becomes more controversial as we move up the line, is a sister school swing space. It sounds very nice in theory. It can be implemented, we've done all our homework on doing this. What this says is, and let me use a different example, and I hope I don't confuse you. If you're familiar with the new Ellsworth Avenue School, it's right across from the main campus of West Palm. I heard somebody mention a parent say that her child was, I think, at Haynes Town, shifted over to Shelter Rock, et cetera, et cetera. If you were at Haynes Town, and you were in fairly good shape, you could easily walk from Haynes Town right over to Ellsworth. It's probably a mile distance away. Those would be considered sister schools, if you can think of Stabby Row and Great Plain, if you know that area. The very closest bike, a couple walk from school A to school B. Very different than moving from Shelter Rock, say, to the Bagby School over on the west side of the Ivy Center. So typically, sister schools are relatively contiguous, they're close together, not always, but we try to do that. What that means is it gets into the idea of pocketed districting, which means we're going to take, if you pretend this is a map, you kind of cut it in half. Typically, from midline to the left go, say that Shelter Rock, and midline to the right would go to another school, a sister school, if Shelter Rock was over private. We're thinking of creating a sister school relationship. We're thinking of creating a sister school relationship with another elementary school, once we have the stable enrollment. There's to be a number of classrooms, I would be willing to, if we had to. However, if it's difficult for parents to say, gee, we're losing our art room, that's that really doesn't sound good to us, it's much more difficult to say, wait a minute, I'm not going to be going to Shelter Rock, I'm going to another school. And we end up with parents saying, you know, I really moved into this neighborhood because I wanted to go to the neighborhood school. We're clearly, the board is clearly aware of that. So we try to keep this at the least challenging, least, um, what?
Impact.
Imp- least impact possible, least upset, we try to keep people as stable as possible without being too volatile. As you go down this list, once you get the sister school swing spaces and small redistricting, it gets more volatile. The last one was an option that the board looked at, and for a variety of reasons, felt that it was not an option, and I'll take that, I can start lying a minute, the idea of eliminating all full-day kindergarten programs. Nobody has voted except for the Baggins School. Why the Baggins School? Because it functions under a certain plan that's required by the state Department of Education, and we have to submit that annually. And in that plan, the operations plan, all school full-day kindergarten, and that school is funded by the state based on that, so we don't have the right to tinker with it in that way, without going through a petition thing. In every other school, we only have one full-day kindergarten program. If we eliminated that, it would free up, in many cases, a classroom. There's a much research out there that says, full-day kindergarten has an impact for the rest of a student's academic career. In fact, about four to five years ago, the Board of Education said to us, our charge to you is go figure out how to full-day kindergarten a child in. And we created a plan, and we're ready to move through, we're making progress, and by this coming September, we would have full-day kindergarten in every classroom, every child. However, the economy tanked, and that eradicated everything. In addition, it also requires some additional, additional classrooms, and that also because the increase in enrollment, that also is very important. So the board chose, obviously, not to fill out that gap. This next chart, I apologize, you don't need to see the numbers necessarily, we weren't happy to read some of them to you. What's more important is that you have an understanding of what this chart represents. If you look at the chart on the far left side, you will see the word school at the top, and it simply lists the schools in alphabetical order, from Ellsworth all the way down to Stadler Row, with the Baggins School on the bottom, because as I mentioned, that function is different. And there are columns that go across, and the columns are kindergarten, grade one, grade two, grade three, grade four, grade five, and some total numbers on the side. Anything that you see as a cell, in the little boxes, that's in white. What that means is that those numbers, the projected enrollment as of today, for each of those classrooms in each of those schools, fits within that K1, twenty-two kids, two through five, twenty-five kids. So I don't mean to misspeak on this one, I say I'm not concerned about those kids, of course I am, but I'm not concerned that it's overcrowded. For example, at Ellsworth, and I don't believe you can see this, but if you look at grade one at Ellsworth, you will see sixty-one students in three sections, that means approximately twenty kids in a class. That's a good number for us, and we feel very confident with that. Very challenging population, we recognize it, and it's still a good number. Anywhere that you see a yellow box, and you'll see many of them, those are on the critical watch list. That means that they have, they're right at the bubble, so they either have twenty-two kids in kindergarten or first grade already, or twenty-five kids in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, or fifth grade. And in a couple cases, let's go back to Ellsworth again, at third grade, you'll see there's a yellow box, it says seventy-four, if you can read it, you can. It says twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-four. One class is over, but there's a particular reason for that, that was an administrative decision, or we're really on the fringe of going above twenty-five that we like to have as, as a district. So if you look at every yellow box there, that's on the watch list, that means that those, those classrooms, or that those grade levels, rather, in all those schools, right now have the same concern that's being brought forward by the Shelter Rock parents like that. If you look at the red boxes, the red boxes are the ones that have forty equals there, and these are the issues that we're really concerned with. Let me give you an example. On the far left-hand side, the first column is for kindergarten, we don't have that problem because we've got a staff over at, at Ellsworth, I'm sorry, at Shelter Rock, the problem, of course, of the art room, but we now have enough staff, and Julie was here on the ice park. Julie and I, then, reviewed this, we spent quite a bit of time going over it, we had budgets on the two people for the increase in enrollment at the elementary level, and we ended up having to increase that because of numbers like this. But Julia said, if you look to giving a teacher, I can cover it, and it will bring us back into acceptable guidelines. If you look at Millridge Primary, and that's in red, the far-left-hand box, currently they have twenty-two, twenty-three, 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 and twenty-three in kindergarten. Our old number was twenty, our new number was twenty-two, and they have five classes of kindergartens there, four of those classes are already equal, and they already maxed out. There's an actual story, we've got, I'll leave you on the next chart. Everywhere you see a red box, and there is only one red box on this, and I don't know if you can see on the left-hand side, a pointer, by the way, the old is carved out, sorry. On the left-hand side, you may be able to see Shelter Rock, two-thirds of the way down the list of schools, and if you move to the right, you'll get one, two, three, four columns over where all the red boxes are. Shelter Rock at grade three has twenty-eight, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven. That's the concern that we believe in Shelter Rock parents, three and four, we're well aware of that, Julia and I have talked about it, Julia said, if you look to giving a teacher, I can't take that person to a different place, what can you afford? If you look below that, you'll see South Street, twenty-six, 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 if you look below that, you see Stadler Row, twenty-six, 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 if you go above Shelter Rock, you get to Millridge, you see twenty-eight, 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 twenty-eight. If you go above that, you get King Street, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven. If you look vertically, grade three across the district, either has red boxes, or you'll see one yellow box, and just a few white boxes, that's really the concern, that's the bubble we're moving through. Short-term solutions will be announced in the top of the gray. The next slide I want to share with you, it's the last slide actually, deals with the concern I think many parents have here tonight from Shelter Rock. On the left side, please, every other schools, the next column over talks about art room, and here's an X there, it means that a full-size art room, the same as Shelter Rock has had for many years. If you look to the next column, you see the word cart, you see a couple of Xs there, that means that those schools already have abandoned the art room because of overcrowding, and there are programs on a cart. If you look to the next column, you'll see music room, and you'll see many schools have a music room, and you'll also see, if you move to the right, one says stage, that's King Street Media, they're doing what Shelter Rock is doing, we didn't put Shelter Rock in there, by the way, which a lot of people know that. So at King Street, they have music on the stage. If you look to the last column, you see cart, Millridge Primary, Mon Street, and Park Avenue have already abandoned that, and they're either in very tiny little rooms, or actually moving from classroom to classroom. If you look at Millridge Primary with the very large numbers that we just mentioned, again, Millridge kindergarten, twenty-two, twenty-three, 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 third grade, twenty-eight, 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 and twenty-eight, they have already at, Millridge Primary abandoned their art room and abandoned their music room, and they're doing art and music on the cart. Now, if you speak with Dr. Palmer, she will tell you, as she did recently to us, Bill was very upset, Sal was very upset, it was not the right way to do business for kids, but as of currently, she's very pleased with the quality of the program. Can you do the electric things you can do in a classroom? Absolutely not. A lot of it comes down to the quality of the teacher, as it does with every classroom. If you have a creative, innovative person, they can make the best of a tough situation, and that's what they're doing over at Millridge. The reason we share this is not to say, oh, shame on you for being concerned about your art room, because of other people, but rather to help illustrate, as we've been trying to, the community, we do have a space issue. That's why money has been pumped into the demographics, that's why the mayor has created a 2020 task force. Quick sidebar, now, the 2020 task force is to prepare us for the year of 2020. What does that mean? It may be in middle school, it may be in high school, it may be in elementary school, who knows what will eventually come out of that? I can tell you that Elio, and Sal, and I, and the mayor, and facilities director, and other city council members, I've been on bill trips, looking at other corporate, looking at corporate property in Derry, maybe some alternate use of space, really trying to leave no stone unturned. However, we have a problem and a challenge in Derry that very few other communities have. In Newtown, for example, their enrollment is decreasing, and they're starting to plan for closings, and they're going through their acts of the debt because of, I don't know, school as a challenger, I don't want to say my school closes, I want my kids to go there, so on and so forth. So with all that as a backdrop, we just wanted to share with you that we have those red boxes, we have overcrowding currently. In each of these cases, in talking to the principals, they're saying, Bill, I can take care of it by moving, abandoning my art room and my music room, I can take my special resource room and my ELL, a special room, a small room, and I can combine those and work a creative schedule with that. And lastly, we are adhering stringently to what the board agonized over for many months, and our first and least disruptive, I don't know if you can read them, least disruptive strategy that a school system can implement is simply putting art and music on the cart. Tom, the last page? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, apologize, we have two, two final pages. And we'll, we'll pair this speed more in depth on this. First of all, as I mentioned before, my all-too-spottedness is daily, weekly, we're getting these spreadsheets, we set a cabinet, we do it Tuesday morning, and we review this. Once the secretaries and the principals are back, we'll be monitoring this daily, and sometimes twice a day, and this becomes mission critical for us in terms of, do we have new staff, et cetera. I think with Sandra or somebody else who mentioned, we have these, the hires that are going to be bringing in, can you make me look at those books? We've cut back some grass down there, but this is beyond bearable, see, these are our core people. We may in fact have to add even more if those enrollment numbers go up in the space of the school, which means something else has to give, so we'll have to cut back on something else, because there aren't supplemental allocations coming, because there's no money to do that. So we will run that very closely, and try to be as prudent as we can. At the close of this school year, we'll eliminate yet another administrative position, and that administrative position after we consolidate a position, where we used to have one person dedicated to art, one person dedicated to music, so on and so forth, this final person had seven departments under her, and we limited her job. That's, that's what we're doing with administration, we're just totally, estimated the administrative structure to try and align the teaching staff. The other two pieces, in situations in which there's already enrollment concern, you saw I have evidence of that, for example, Shelter Rock, we will freeze permissive transfers. What does that mean? You don't like to do this, it causes hardship for some folks, but let's pretend that I live over in the Millridge area, in the mall, yet I work over in Marshalls, over in Berkshire Shopping Center. And if I can get my child to go to school at Shelter Rock, right after I finish work, I can go and pick my child up, and, or my, my mother and my father lives there, and that's built in daycare, so it's going to save me a lot of money, I don't have to have babies that have to come in. Can I allow my child to move to Mrs. Miss Mark's school? It would go to Julia, and she would look and say, you want to come into second grade? We have classes of sixteen and eighteen. Sure, we can bring in two, three, or four more kids, not a problem, we try to accommodate parents, and we can handle that. The transportation, by the way, is on the parent, not on the school's. But many parents, yes, not a problem, because I'm walking her anywhere, drop them off on the way to work, pick them, or her up on the way home. We're going to freeze that and say, we'd like to accommodate you, we're only adding to a problem that's already existent, not just a Shelter Rock kindergarten school, that is that same issue. Second bullet point, not allow a school to be a receiving school for the choice program. What does that mean? There are no child left behind, which is now being reauthorized, and much of these hideous sanctions are going to be going away. President Obama and Secretary Duncan have said this is a mistake, it's a flawed piece of legislation, we have to come up with a new, new piece of legislation that addresses it, but that hasn't happened here. So we're still functioning, and maybe the sanction may see that they, who says, if the school is identified as not achieving its adequate yearly progress two years in a row, the parents can then take that school's Title I money, or if it affects Title I, and they can take that Title I money and leave that school, go to another school that has not been identified, at least at this point in time, as a school not achieving its A rating. Parenthetically speaking, again, the National Education Association, the National Association for Superintendents, and the federal government have now recognized that by the year 2014, the NCLB has done, almost every school in the United States will be identified as a school needing improvement, because it's a flawed piece of legislation. It says every child in the country will now achieve at a hundred percent, a hundred percent of children will now achieve at that benchmark, which has never happened in the history of the world, in any country. So as we get more and more schools identified, as more and more school systems come on lists, we are fewer and fewer places to move children. Shelter Rock is not identified, and seeing Mrs. Horn, whether she's crying quietly in the corner, hoping that it will not be identified, but we would use that as a receiving school because the law says that parents need to be given options to receive. We will not allow Shelter Rock or any other schools to be receiving for those grade levels that are already negatively impacted.
The students that are there must remain. There are a number of students under choice, they were part of legislation, any student that entered under that program will remain for their entire period, so they're untouched at all, just wanted to make that clear.
The only exception, as a parent chooses, which we have had some parents choose, go back to their neighborhood school, but the law says they're terminal grade, and Shelter Rock is grade five, obviously, so kids in kindergarten can stay through sixth grades there all the way through to fifth grade. And as Sal said, once a parent becomes embedded in the school, we don't want to pull those people out, just one for children. The last piece here, as any registrations will be assigned to a sister school, which has a lower enrollment than in close proximity for a period of one year, meaning as new people are coming in, we've already seen that Shelter Rock has maxed out at grade three, and it hasn't maxed out, it's exceeded our enrollment targets. If we get, and we're never getting, let's say we got to thirty, which is just insane, and there's no room in the classroom if you fit another desk, any new child coming in, even if the parent says, we bought our house in this neighborhood to go to the school, there is no room at the end for you, you will have to be assigned at least for one year to a different school. It's going to make a lot of people very angry, as this enrollment trend decreases, as the mobility rate swirls around this, and parents move, and we have to say to them, we're sorry we couldn't do this. We know one likely pick up the bus in for them, but that's going to be an added increase of cost for us, it's going to hurt us in a way. Lastly, if you look at this, the first three things that we just mentioned, these are short-term interventions that we already have plans to put into place, at the board level for conversation. And then long-term, long-term, this is kind of oxymoron here, when you look at this, conduct the redistricting study, most schools are significantly crowded, and make a recommendation to the board by the first of this year. Haven't you all conducted these, these studies? Sure we have, they're literally changing on a daily basis. Julia, correct me where I'm off on this, I believe, as of October 1, it's the official enrollment date that the state sets, because the kids come and go so quickly, and, and they don't get stable at any given point in time in terms of their enrollment pattern. So the state arbitrarily says, October 1 of any given year, that's your enrollment. Well, it goes up or down, doesn't matter, you look at October 1. I believe at kindergarten, you were fifty-four, or fifty-four in the spring, and now you're eighty-nine. So if you look, and, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Julia, from your history of being at South Street, would you be willing to sign a paper that says eighty-nine is guaranteed, and you will open school with just eighty-nine, or might it go up?
It may go up, because we get registrations to enroll in office.
Typically, our numbers go up.
And they go down, any one or two, but usually, two, two will come.
That's the mobility. And what's impacting here again is, a lot of the parents who have chosen, as something happens, to send their children to parochial schools, public schools lose tuition, they turn around and say, you know what, I can't afford this anymore, it's ten thousand dollars a year, I need that money just to survive. So those yells should return from here at the top, and some of them are permanent. And we don't know that until a parent comes in and says, I'm coming back to school here. So by November 1, once we have the official enrollment date, and by November 1, we have our best level of stability for the school year traditionally, by November 1, we'll have information to the board based on a redistricting study of what's happened in the past two to three months. And then lastly, I hope we don't confuse anybody on this, try to be as clear as I can, as I mentioned- As I mentioned, the mayor created a 2020 committee, a space study committee, that's going to look at our community, not just for schools, by the way, but across the board, saying, "Can we retrofit other corporate buildings, for example, make them into schools? Or can we decommission a school and make it into something else?" That's the year 2020, this is the year 2011. So, right now, although it's long-term, it's still short-term, we have been talking about Millridge Intermediate, which we closed as a cost savings factor last school year, and we blended the Millridge and the King Street populations. And if you have questions about it, I don't want to take everybody's time, I'm always available to you, just give me a call, I can have your stuff in big time, sure for you. We decommissioned Millridge Intermediate, currently Head Start is there. The mayor's plan, the conjunction of Jim and Maroni and the city councils to build a site of a former Head Start building, a new building, a prefab type construction that goes up very quickly. Mr. Maroni, he has twenty-eight classes there, will leave and go into the new Head Start. We have eight special needs classes there, those kids will be pulled out. We could make, we could make Millridge another elementary school if we have to. However, at the board level and cabinet level and at the middle school principals, we've been talking about moving our STEM program, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, to Millridge Intermediate. It would downsize both middle schools by roughly six hundred students, depending on how we do it, five hundred to six hundred is the maximum capacity in that building. And that will give us more readability of both middle schools and the essence give us a third middle school. That has been our plan, because we have enrollment issues at the middle schools as well, and there's no funding available, we can't pass a referendum, a fifteen million dollar building, because we just can't afford it. So this is a creative way of downsizing both schools, or shift the demographics to a particular form, form to allow us to downsize both. However, that option may have been put on hold, and for a period of time, Millridge Intermediate may become a K-five school. These are all ideas that we're putting out to the board tonight that you haven't heard yet. This is our best thinking to date. We'll continue to work with the board on this and with the cabinet and the principals to see if there's a need to go down this path. Right now, with everything we've said, if you're asking me where I see it, I would say that we currently can absorb the issues that we identified here through the art of the carton, things like that. And it would be for another year or so, depending on how the demographics shake out, that will have a significant, probably do have to do something as dramatic as pocket redistricting or maybe pulling, if we were to move to Millridge Intermediate and make it a K-five school, that means we would have to take that map behind us, which is the map of all the school districts in Danbury, and totally re-carve that. It might be a small section that we re-carve, or the entire school system might be reshuffled. And we have probably a professional committee help us with that. If you want to tear a community apart, redistrict the entire community. Everybody gets thrown out of their school or has the chance of doing that. People move to neighbors because they want to go to that school where their kids went to it and they went to it, their family has, we don't want to do that, that's the worst case scenario, last resort. We're charged, however, to come up and make sure we can accommodate the current population of students that we have. So that's why all items still on the table, crazy or not, still put them on the table, and the board and senior staff does due diligence.
Just to add, as you know, we talked about mine and looked at some options, and then another choice that the city wanted to go towards, one of the rationales behind that, the modules, if it's part of your planning process to remedy any enrollment challenges, then it's reversible, the state negated that, so the town would be obliged to pay for the entire amount, so that's one of the reasons why that, you know, see, that was a power station we had. The other rationale there is the sister school concept. We do have a few schools throughout the district that actually are under enrollment, and we've been looking at it in terms of, they've been taking in special programs and other things, so that's why initially looking at this, we didn't come to the board and may and say we can redistrict. We could, we could have sent kids, I, in my heart, think it was fair for the parents and the folks to have that thrown at them so quickly, that's something we need to look at, and look at, I thought it was good, and it's the same, we didn't talk about it while we had, this would have been two of us side, folks. So we have the ability to accommodate, but we don't have the ability to, we don't like the numbers. I will tell you that researchers complete the number of schools that have put aides in that is non-infectious technique, but I want the board to be mindful, if you make any moves at one place, we have a number of our classrooms that are exceeding the number we would like to see, and certainly the twenty-seven and the twenty-six. I do think, I do think if they start running up to the frightening number, someone sitting there who said, "I moved from the city," who was that? Yeah, well, this is what scared us, we said, "You know, we're afraid, we're going to be up to that thirty number, I mean, we're really concerned. We'd have to jump to you and figure out, you know, what we're going to do and make some moves." And the best thing I can tell you is that we're freezing enrollment of schools, and then we mobilize those youngsters in schools where we have space, and we can give them a quality experience education. You saw a year on any sister school, the reason why we put down a year is very simple. Our hope, either one way or the other, either we get another site like MRI, or if you have to go to modules, you never know, never say no, or never, then we would have to move those students out of there. We don't want to make their education mobile for about a year. So we're hoping by November that we can keep everything as is and we can make a decision if we're going to redistrict it, that we do it, we tell the community to talk about it, and we make the move. So that's why you see this and you don't see aides in the classroom and that. But if we start hitting higher numbers, we're going to have to definitely move them. Someone said, "Can you find money for athletics?" You know, you can see the challenge that we've had in the budget, between people leaving us and coming, we have paid teachers, that meant we were going to hire, that was part of the allowance money that we had from last year, the work money, and then we added some money of our own, knowing that we had enrollment fees. But every job that we have, that's hoping we're looking at whether or not we can keep in terms of should we add a teacher. Bill will tell us in two weeks how many students that, you know, are exceeding the numbers, and if our kids do some, I mean, they have to do some. I will say publicly now, if someone from Shelter Rock wants to transfer out, I consider it, it's a wonderful school, I would want to transfer, I understand that. So, you know, some folks ask me, "Why don't you just ask parents, someone may want to go to another school." I put that out there. If it's convenience and you need to go to another school, you want some work or other means, we'll consider it very definitely. We just thought you needed to add to the story here tonight, just, you know, what happened with Shelter Rock. This is something that's very dear to our heart, this is something that we want to solve, but it's not easy because it's easy a lot of times, and that's the issue. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Dr. Glass and Dr. Fesbrough. I want to open the floor to discussion, but I just want to ask a couple of questions first before we start. The numbers that you showed on the presentation, they assume that you're reclaiming the art and music room, so the class sizes and the number of sections that you have, assume that you have room for them because you removed the art and music room, is that true?
Well, if I don't see it from you, question correct, Mr. Foss. The only art room that is being taken, as far as I know, and hasn't already been taken, is the one over at Shelter Rock. And that's the school that's projected to grow by fifty-seven percent by the number that there is no one there who's been close to that in terms of its projection. The numbers you saw there on that spreadsheet, are numbers that where principals have already placed youngsters in classrooms. And with the exception of the Shelter Rock art room, every youngster is either currently in a classroom that existed last year, or in art room that once was an art room or a music room, or once was a music room, that's a full-size classroom. So I guess the short answer is, every one of those children are placed in a current, fully functioning, full-size classroom, with one exception, and actually that's been taken care of too, because I believe Julie's already arranged for the kindergarten to go into the art room. Yeah, and we've taken and arranged for storage container to be close to the building so that the art materials, because the teacher has a huge amount of art in terms of her credit, they are now in, there will be a facility in the storage compartment, so everything that we possibly could have taken care of, and all those kids have been placed in classrooms, it's just that the classrooms are starting to get pretty large, maybe twenty-eight kids or more.
I just want to comment, this reflects some earlier comments that I had. I think generally I'm disappointed in the position that we're at from the perspective, you know, we worked two years ago, we started looking at this, now maybe two and a half years ago, when we started looking at this, and my expectation, I'm going to speak with the rest of the board, but my expectation was that we would have had a redistricting analysis completed by this school. Because we're behind now, I'm very skeptical about the reaction time that we have now, the short reaction time we have now, if any sudden spikes occur above and beyond what we have experienced. If you look at Shelter Rock, look at the third grade, all it's going to take is another ten students to put them in every section, and we don't have the physical space to put desks there. And I don't think we should have gotten to this point without a plan for that already place. We're talking about modules and other possibilities, which will take months to figure out how we're going to do that, and much less paid for. And I think this is something that we should have tackled several months ago, a few years ago, given the direction of the board two and two and a half years ago. So I think some of this, I think, is on ourselves, I think, waiting for November first date because that's the state's arbitrary date, October first, I think the state's date is relevant in that the state's date is set for funding and other purposes, the people are still coming in, the place is still moving around, and after November first, they're going to continue moving around. And if we don't get our act together and figure out exactly what has to get done as soon as possible, and not waiting for other members to come in and out, we're going to be faced with a much more serious problem than people hearing this or seeing here. And I just feel that we need to be a little bit more prepared and we need to act a little bit more urgently as the situation evolves. And that's my opinion. For the special for the board, Mr. Janelle.
To Dr. Glass and Dr. Fesbrough, why can't we have, this is courtesy, this is for my role, board members and administration, please be careful. The follow-up point about the redistricting, why can't we have two thirds, one on the pocket redistricting, and the other on the full-scale redistricting? The other question I have is, three, four weeks ago, we were discussing the concept of the Millridge Intermediate as being an extension in the following year for the STEM Academy and making that, I think, a magnet school. Is that being scrapped because of, and is that idea being scrapped and that will be moved for a K-five school because of other thoughts to acquire commercial buildings or buy commercial buildings or retrofit for a new middle school?
Let me answer the first question in terms of timing. The November date there is trend sensitive to parents, we've been working for the past two and a half months, and a lot of it depending on neighborhood transportation, and we have a, let's say, somewhat of a plan of movement of students we have to verify, so that certainly had much bigger potential than that. If we prefer, we can move there and then we can start a budget accordingly, so that can happen. Secondly, the evolution of the 2020, looking at something beyond Millridge Intermediate and looking at some commercial properties seems to be a direction that the mayor and the committee would like to move in, and I believe they'll be making some recommendations at the 2020 committee. We are going to, we are in a position, if we don't offer MRI as an elementary school and we move towards putting our middle school students in there, I don't know if we can fit six hundred, you know, as well, it would be four, four to four fifty, then those schools that are sister schools that I talked about, that we do when they're redistricting, we redistrict them, there would be a pocket redistricting for those two or three schools that are, have their limit into those buildings that can accommodate the space, handle those, so that's what we do. But there seems to be an urgency to look at first in something as the third middle school, right? So, remember, we looked at King Street and all of that, that it seemed that we can use MRI as an elementary school, cleaning up, doing some things towards, and has the ability to have kindergarten there and the rest of the program, and just leave it. So that will have to be determined by 2020. But for us, Bill says, "Short-term," as Erwin said, there were, we did not see, we did not see, and that's our mistake, the quickness of which was going to rise, did not think enrollment was going to be as much of an issue, considered Shelter Rock with a swing area. Now Shelter Rock's always had a swing area for enrollment, that was, we talked about that about four years ago, didn't do it, we talked about it four years ago, so we just monitored, but I believe we can, we'll be able to move those students into another area, those other schools if we have, no matter what the 2020 does. If we don't, we can't educate the schools in Shelter Rock, in Millridge, in some of the buildings. So we have to do it.
Surely you have a problem in middle schools, you see their problems growing. If you're looking toward purchasing or acquiring commercial space, that's not going to be in your future because the city doesn't have money to fund the board of education for its company, so to go out and purchase that or do something, it's going to be a suspected vote by the residents of the city. All of that going through to get started, to pass, funding coming in, to get construction started, I mean, what are we looking at in terms of time element, and you still expanding opening up the seams of the middle schools? You have these kids from the elementary school moving into middle schools. We had a plan that I thought was intact with MRI being the STEM Academy, and we're going to move around and do some construction work on King Street and do some more here, what happened to those ideas? And 2020 just came about five months ago, it was in existence for two years, and it just, we created it five months ago.
I can't answer those questions, I'd say that I think, you know, as well, those were concepts and ideas that were discussed, they were not cast in stone in terms of making those recommendations. We looked at and studied, and as you know, we were going to begin some construction at MRI this year, but the committee decided to look in another direction, direction first. It would require a referendum by the public, probably next spring, you'd have to put an application through. We are, you know, you would be at least two years away to probably getting, and that would be aggressive into a middle school. In the interim, we have the, we have the elementary issue. The elementary issue, we saw, either redistricting or with another campus. When we said at those committees, we talked about modules as a partial transition period, and that got, that was negated for a number of reasons, right or wrong and different. We are challenged, we kept saying we're challenged, as Erwin said, "Well, I would have expected something two years ago." Well, that might have been a redistricting, we didn't get there. But where we are right now is with the middle school that has been growing, and we're going to have to do exactly what the middle school, what the elementary school is doing now, that is, all the specials will have to give up their space, other than maybe music rooms and band room, and those classrooms will have to be used as a classroom. That's going to have to happen until we get there. We're going to have to fish a cut bait with another middle school or the redistricting, and that's what we felt we would have to report from 2020 and make the recommendations on board this fall, early in November, so we can move forward. We'll be asking the city, what I've said to the mayor meeting, whether we do redistricting or otherwise, we're going to need more capital to put more teachers in and transportation money, no matter what. If we open it as a separate school, just opening a school is a few million dollars. You know what our increases have been the last few years? So we're certainly challenged, but we have to step up and I think in advocate for the kids and make that decision.
But all of these denials that the committee, as you call it, suspects 2020 committee is doing, is preventing us from doing our jobs, preventing us from providing quality education for these kids, and it's the same thing that happened two years ago with the movement of Head Start out of Millridge. It kept procrastinating, procrastinating, and then all of a sudden, you know, the doors opened and they could find the materials and everything else through the middle of the building. We are suffering, absolutely suffering, and for week to week, not week to week, every time we do the board meetings, maybe a couple of weeks, every time we do committees, this is a different scenario. So, you know, I don't intend one 2020 committee and then I'm lost, because that's a whole new group of concepts. I think the time for concepts are over, there's got to be some sort of time for action. This board and this administration works hard to resolve these problems. What we can only do with what we're given, we can only do with basically what we have. Sometimes we sort of argue amongst ourselves, but we're still essentially all on the same page, and that is to provide page, and that is provide our education for the kids in that area. But it becomes more and more difficult with these particular challenges. And I don't know what the solution is, but I tend to think one of the things we can do is to come out and give the board a recommendation based on what it would be on a spot, partial, whatever you want to call it, redistricting, and then a flow. And I think that's step number one. I don't want to take the initiative to say that you do it because it's not my prerogative, but I would suggest it something that we add because we can have some feel for it rather than just discuss it. And then we can go through the other options. And the next time you have a 2020 meeting, we can bring to those, that meeting, our particular solutions, our recommendations, and ask them to adopt it. Because all the stuff they're doing now, to me, is all hypothetical stuff.
Bob's going to respond, but I will tell you, the 2020 is not a redistrict, yes, your correct.
Mr. Tappertone. Okay, this idea, the shortage of space, of course, goes back at least 2007, when the Saturday report was commissioned by the city council and plus a few hundred thousand dollars, that was tabled for a few years. The committee that's now in existence already existed, but that did not need, I'm not the person in audit, but I would say a year and a half, two years, and was reconstituted just reasonably. I think all of us, all of us, the city, hangars, has to realize you just can't keep kicking the can down the road. I really think that's what was done with the Saturday report, with the first calling of, I don't know what it's called, the 2020 committee or the 2010 committee at then, but it wasn't called for a long, long time. If I'm wrong on that, the people who are represented, please correct me. And so there's, you know, I think they've learned something, you can't do this. Okay, now we're in this position, I think we just have to deal with what we can. I think there's a meeting of the committee on Monday, am I right?
The 7th.
Oh, the 7th. Okay, I would encourage, I would encourage everyone out there and everyone watching on the video, if you are really interested in what this committee is doing, it is now meeting in force, I would attend the meeting, attend the meeting. Let yourself, let people, all the representatives on that committee, let them know how you feel. Okay, we do too many things after the fact. Everybody gets mobilized because someone proposes that, look, everybody has to have a fair share and the SQUAD's program should take a 10% cut and should take a cut like everything on the outer fringe area and those circles you were looking at. Okay? So we all get mobilized after the fact. The problem, like we should be doing, is, okay, we get the information like we had in the past 2007, oh, that's all we should have, that's over. So all we can do now is go to all the meetings, be informed, okay? And let's pick up the ball now and move forward.
Before we, I just want to add a point, just to, just to talk to Mr. Tappertone, Mr. Giannelli, and to what I've heard, I didn't attend the last 2020 meeting myself, but there's a lot of, it's, over the last several meetings, there's been a lot of back and forth. Well, the 2020 meeting, people will say, no, well, this is a board discussion. And now we're sitting here and we're saying, well, you've got to go to the 2020 meeting. But that's not what we're here about, to talk about tonight. You know, the two, these processes are really separate. There's a 2020 committee that's going to take a long time to figure out, maybe not too long, it's a strategic plan that's supposed to be put together very thoughtfully, that's going to require a referendum, and we're talking about some type of major construction, build-in, purchase, renovation, et cetera. That's a long-term proposition that really, we're not, in this meeting, that's not the focus of this discussion. Focus of this discussion is what's within the board's purview, which is, within the space that we do have, that we do occupy, and that we know we're going to occupy for the next at least year, because none of what's in the 2020 is going to be effective for this school year at a minimum, it's our job to figure out with the space that we do have, how do we use that space to the maximum available possibility given the financial operating budget constraints that we have? How do we fit kids in a space where they're not packed in like studies and that they're not even red or super red or beyond red? That's totally within our jurisdiction, how do we rectify that issue? And to punt it to a 2020 committee is not the answer, because this is a tactical decision that has to be made by the administration and by the school, and has to be made very soon. And the committee needs to know what that decision is. And if it's too late to do redistricting this year, if that's the way it is, we just have to be able to address, how do we provide the space for the students with the space that we have, that we know we're going to have this year and that's not going to change? That is given. The enrollment in total, and the leading school might change, it might vary, but we need a plan to deal with, well, when that movement happens, how do we address that? And we can't leap that to, well, let's see where we are in October, November, December, January, and there are thousands of people out there with children in schools where their decision's going to be made at that time and beyond without much, without much notice beforehand. And we need to have a tactical plan before that happens. That's my point. But these are two separate, in my mind, these are two separate discussions. Mr. Tappertone.
I would agree with most of what you said, Mark. The only thing is, so much depends upon what happens with Mill Ridge and Head Start. And that committee is working on that. And really, so many things that we're talking about, even on, what do you call it, short range, is it just this year or one year? But so much hinges on Mr. Maloney and the city getting together to build something which we were told at that committee, but it's one getting at it, it's dealing with short-term stuff too. And if they don't get over the hurdle of solving where to put Head Start and so forth to get it off the ground, and we were told by the city engineer, and he said he could do what, with the near Cathy, he was there. Okay, so that's short range. When I'm getting at they're dealing with both, but you're right, most of the stuff they're dealing with is long term. Okay, but the thing is, I'm most concerned with the thing, I'll be honest with you, I don't see anything being done until the first thing that Mill Ridge is available for, for these things.
I understand how it's delivered, but it's not well limited to the fact that school opens in 30 days, and we know for a fact that Head Start's not moving out of Mill Ridge in 30 days. So I think we're going to talk about what are the plans for this school year in Shelter Rock and in other places, you know, people are concerned about Shelter Rock. But I think the concern for tonight's meeting is more, and we have to address that as well, what's going to happen when school opens in 30 days? That's the critical thing.
Well, let me be clear, I mean, what's going to happen in 30 days? We're monitoring, we're going to reassign students, so it's not... Am I going to do something? Oh, we didn't have to give this to you.
Mr. Fable.
Mr. Molinaro has spoken for the first time, Mr. Fable.
Point of view, Mr. Molinaro.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I think we got lulled into a sense of security because of the Head Start program, being promised that they would be moved out within a year or two years ago. And then we were promised again that, okay, they'll be moved out last year. Well, of course, we know that when they bought the building, they had numerous problems and everything was put on hold. And now we are faced with DEFCON 5, actually. Here we are with kids all over the place, we don't know where to put them, and it's a horrible situation for us to be in. How do we solve it? I think, in my opinion, I don't see why we can't pocket redistrict immediately. That's what I would like to see, was we do have schools that are underutilized, not by much, as you can see by the numbers, if you could see the numbers, not by much. 23, 24, 25 isn't very far from the 28th that's in the other classrooms. So pocket redistricting to some, maybe one or two schools, but I can't see it across the entire district.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Mrs. Cooper.
I'm the chairman. Going back to two and a half years ago, and I think that I was appointed before I sort of wanted to set up the utilization committee. And one of the recommendations that I had made to the utilization committee that turned into a site and facility was to really take the time and look at full redistricting. And that was one of the recommendations that came out of that. And, man, really, we know that we're not going to build a new school, and we know that we can't change everything right now. And I heard all the comments that were said, but I think we have to, you know, we have to do what we need to do, that whatever school opened, that the children can receive whatever quality of education that they can receive at that specific time. But I think we as a board, we need to come up with a structure, a recommendation to say, and I think the reason that no one has did this, because it has not come from a port as, we want you to start this process, this is what we want you to look at. If, looking at, and I have a problem with a pocket redistricting, but I think eventually, we have a redistricting in 16 years, we will have to look at the entire redistricting. And you know, most of you that are here know that I've always said that we really need to start to connect redistricting as a whole. So if that's a recommendation, that's not going to help us find a remediation school. But we have to make some type of construction, recommendation in order for, you know, the superintendent to move forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? I'm sure the discussion was not usual.
I just, sorry, interruption, yeah. I guess what I'm hearing here is, one, the November date was put out too far in terms of timing. We can accelerate that to actually have something, a first meeting in September, and begin that. Number two, that we won't have to relocate students to other schools, to accommodate, particularly if it goes much more than that. What we're not prepared to do because I think we have those experiences, is to turn around now and make a recommendation to redistrict. It would not be that difficult in some respects, because we've already done it by Brown, so we know who's there. And traditionally, there has been Shelter Rock, who's had an area that's on both ways and two other buildings, but it's just a matter, I think, and maybe I'm saying this wrong, in spite of parents, to give them more time to get your idea and understand what's coming forward. But we're all going to have to move some kids out of some schools, so that'll pop in and go to the city council. Those are the only plans that we have in September. And to add, come to you, and if we have, if he finds out there are more, more, more students and we need teachers, we're going to have to come and add those sections, and we're not going to eliminate full day kindergarten, that's one way of getting, we said no, that's not the right thing to do. So, you know, we don't want to rent, although I've spoken to the local superintendent, there are some spaces available if we have to do that, so I have that in my back pocket. We're hoping not to get there in terms of rental, but we'll be prepared to make some of those moves, beginning as soon as he begins auditing the actual enrollments, second week in August, when the principal gets back, is the first and one of Bill's agenda.
This is Molinaro. It's part of the discussion. This is...
I just wanted to, um, you, you shouldn't hear me. He's our cafeteria voice. I, thank you. I just wanted to say that I think that at Shelter Rock, for this school year 2011, 12, that we can deal with what you have put forth as far as freezing some of the issues as far as other districts and looking at, and freezing the grade three. My biggest concern basically is 2012, 2013. Now, that is the big issue, because as it is now, we have five kindergarten classes, and next year, those classes will go into grade one, and I will need two, at least two classrooms to accommodate just those students going into grade one, and I don't have one classroom for a grade K. Grade, so year 2012, 13, that's the crucial piece for Shelter Rock. I think we can make it this year, we've already put plans in place. 2012, 13, critical point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner.
Thank you, Ms. Warner, for doing, you know, what you do with the resources that you have and, you know, running an excellent school in here at Shelter Rock.
Before you move on, so there's a board's intent for us to move that date to the first meeting in September, is that, is that, okay, so we'll make that modification.
The other thing I would suggest is that we post the presentation that we've seen here tonight for our benefit and for the public's benefit on our homepage, so people can see that. Appreciate that. Mr. Giannelli?
Sir. If you was on September 1st, are you going to present to us the pocket redistricting and in addition to the full district, a full redistricting? You going to give us two scenarios?
Right now, how do I answer the nine? I don't know. Quite frankly, what we're going to do is look at the, look at the schools again, we're going to have a better idea of who actually showed up, and then see if we have to make, if the pocket redistricting will work. If not, then we have an appointment for that, a whole redistricting. The whole redistricting is going to assume the opposency of a school. That's the major difference. A pocket redistricting would only be maybe accommodate seven to eight, 90 kids, let's say, at Shelter Rock and 40, 50 of Mill Ridge. Okay? It may be that. But if we know that we're moving forward and that would not work because of, then we have to look at the city, sit back and say, okay, we have to redistrict, then we have to be mindful of office, civil rights, the balance of ethnicity, all of that, and bring a plan to the board. So we have to look at it from both lenses.
Okay, I just wanted to know which your sequence of events would be. So the first one we're going to get would be a pocket, and assuming that works, if it doesn't work, then you have to go to the full and deal with all the generations that you just talked about.
I wouldn't be surprised if it would be both, depending on the number, but we'd have to look back. I mean, in fairness for disclosure, as Erwin said, why didn't we do something, you know, eight, 10 months ago? If we bring forward the plan, and we bring forward the plan, then it's out there, and parents can react to it.
I just want to be sure that we all understand what we're going to receive in this way.
And thank you to the Shelter Rock parents for your time. We'll move on to our next discussion item, freshman sports program.
Thank the parents for coming very much, and Julia, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Sadi.
Thank you, Chairman.
Freshmen sports. Elliot, he's here. Elliot, as we talked about, you heard what was said in the beginning, apparently the, it's good, most stuff is formally organized now and fully structured, so I'd imagine whatever money is raised, then would be somehow given to the school, and rather than it just be stored in the school accounts, right? All right, so we'll give you accounting of what we know we have in there for the freshman program. I gave the board a memo regarding how it would work because of the timing, we divide the season up into trimesters, so the fall is going to require 43,000, 46,000. And the board recommended that we were to run the program, that funding, that amount. And we are 20, oh, no, 25,000, 25,000 dollars. I know there's fundraisings to go, and I tried to push it out as far as I could, and I believe we have, Elliot, in August...
19.
19. We talked to the AD, he talked to the school systems, and they're willing to wait as well for us to see where we're at and make that decision. If it comes to fruition, I hope it does, that we don't have them in the fall, then obviously, they're going to have enough money for the winter. That's a foregone provision, that will happen, and we're going to stop working in the spring, and then, you know, we just still would have to go for next year and move for the budget process. So...
I'm a little confused. Elliot, how is the money between the...
I think it's pushing forward.
Elliot, I'm a little confused. How did the money between the Booster Club and the Adoptions School Program get fixed? How did the money between the Booster Club and the Adopt a School program get mixed? Is anybody know?
We never mixed it. It's not mixed.
We didn't mix it on our account. It was our council's.
Oh, okay. I don't know what Adopt a School has. That's been...
Adopt a School program has, for example, ability to collect money in categories, so it doesn't go to a category that person does not want to go. So if someone had money to be, we had the ability to have, have money accepted for the freshman school and go into the account. The reason why we did that, because this happened so suddenly, nobody had the ability to collect the money, where was it going to go? We had a system already established in Adopt a School. So we set up a separate account that's at freshman school. Any money that would have been received or donated would go right into that account for freshman sports. That's the only reason why we did it. But now, yeah, that's not going to be necessary.
Yes, I have a question. Can I have a question?
We can't address questions there.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so there's really no deciphering. All the money that's in the freshman account is going to the Booster Club?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. I think there's only $150, you know, which is in the freshman...
According to Mrs. Meek, I had a conversation with MB yesterday. The Adopt a School program for freshman athletics, it was told that a total of $100 had been forwarded to the City Adopt a School program by the community, which was out there this evening. Going forward, so that after, the Booster Club, which is going to be a entity now, if you have your federal permission as a minor one, C3, at some future date, the Booster Club will make a formal donation to the school district, correct?
Correct. It's the amount of money that I think that is...
Unless there's specific questions we can ask. Any further discussion?
No, I think almost all of us have answered.
Any other board member have any question? My concern, I was raised a concern, is that now, you know, we're continuing to fundraise, I want to applaud all the members of the program that are here, who worked timeless hours trying to get money in a very short, very defined, but my concern is, you know, given the rotated nature of what would be cost for, this is not a one-time, you know, there were other fundraising efforts that have occurred in the past, in the district, for purchases like smart boards and other, other one-time purchases. This is something that's going to be a recurring item. So, you know, my concern in the long term, I guess in the short term, it looks like we have to lose money for winter, and we might have enough in the spring as well, maybe the fall. But as we go forward, this is going to have to be a continuous effort, year-round effort, assuming this environment stays the same. Where people are going to, it's going to be a full-time job to go out and raise money, to continuously turn over a program, and as the seasons change, the next season's going to have to get funded. And I think that's a long-term issue, you're going to have, not the reschedule that it could be done. Or when you keep hitting the same population of people over and over and over again. And I think for a one-time effort, that's a, is very doable, but I think on a sustainable basis, unless you have thousands of people involved, it could happen, but it's, I think it's going to be difficult over the long term from this, say, year two, three, four that way. And if the budget climate doesn't improve, I think it makes these some difficulty that should be discouraged, not the reschedule. I think it's something to consider as we're going to businesses and individuals and people, but it's, it's going to require continuous, nearly continuous spending. But I hope it's successful. Any further discussion? This is the long term.
I know this is not the case here for the leadership of the SOS group, but just, again, thinking ahead and going forward, that any fundraising activities, we fund our collective on a generic level. In other words, not with, this be given to a specific, to a athletic program, unless we want to titillate issues on it. So the dollars, as they are collected, and the area marketing donation is made to the school district, they're made to support freshman sports as a general category, not specific to the base program.
This is why, sorry to interrupt, but that's why you need to see the whole season at a time, because it's more...
The thing I think this raises for us, is we put the long-term plans on, if climate doesn't change and we can't afford to do it, and we stay away from, pay to participate across the board, now that it's a cognitive, you know, it may happen, if we do a combination of fundraising and assessment, that might be the way too, but I think it opens up opportunities that we need to have that, and not wait until the end, and I agree with that, very definitely. So maybe if the two, two can come together somehow reasonably.
Just one last thing, I think for future, to make things a little bit easier in the future, I would suggest, you're an official nonprofit now, I would suggest maybe if you have an appointed leader of the group, that would help us float questions to you if we ever, and would help in future meetings to, in general, board meetings. So, that's just a suggestion. Mr. Jemelis?
Just pointing to information to the new Booster Club membership, to the leaders, now that you're incorporated, there isn't tax return that's required with being a nonprofit. Make sure you want to stay in the following that return, there are severe penalties if you do not do it. Just understand the mechanics of what you have to do with your time. It's called the line I need, and just looking. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jemelis. Any further discussion?
Except to ask, what do you think, how am I going to find out your profits in two and a half weeks here? I got here from Billy, I need some official, like, president of the Booster Club to come and talk to us, and, you know, we need to, we need to have some kind of phone process. So maybe, you need to call my office tomorrow, we can talk. Billy, you're one of the representatives, figure out how to do that, so we get good information. If we don't jump to them, we'll give you as much time as we can.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your efforts, and it was a pasta dinner, which some of us attended, less being, I think was very successful, by the money and by just the spirit of people in the room. I think that was very successful, like, still have a can of money, we, I think that was a great effort, in a very short period of time, and appreciate it. It's probably very, I think, a whole nice thing, so, thank you all. Chair's going to call for a five-minute recess.